All right, good evening and welcome to the March 2023 Tannup Kipsey Zoning Board of Appeals. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll do a roll call. Art?
Yes, sir.
Christine?
Here.
Tony G?
Here.
Tony S?
Here.
Phyllis?
Here.
Okay, and Larry is absent, and I'm here. So, for those of you, anyone unfamiliar with the procedure here before the Zoning Board of Appeals, there's an agenda up here on the corner. Each application will be taken in the order that it appears on the agenda. The applicant will be sworn and describe what their application is all about. The board members may have some questions. The audience is entitled to participate and ask questions. They're all sworn, and they can appear either in person or via Zoom. So if we're all ready to begin, it's to item number one, which I understand has been withdrawn.
Yes.
Okay, so then item two is Hamar Clark, a Congress Court. Is there somebody here for that application? Come on up. Thank you for fixing the clock.
My name is James Hughes. I'm from Andre the Son Province.
Have a seat and just talk into the microphone because some people are watching from home as well.
Mr. Hughes, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
Well, it's a, we need a variance for a side lot and a rear lot. Not a large one, a small variance. There are small lots up where Mr. Clark lives. And we went through the HOA and got that approved and provided them with the necessary drawings that they wanted, and they approved us.
Okay, and then? There's been some proof of that provided?
Yes.
Yes. The copy of the letter should be in your packet.
Okay. All right, and is there a reason that you can't fit it anyplace else?
It's a small yard.
Okay.
Yeah, and then it slopes off in a certain section. We're still pretty far from the property line, though.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony G?
No questions.
Tony S?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this? I don't see anyone in the room. Anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application?
If you're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself or raise your hand. I just see one person who's unmuted. I don't know, Sherri, did you, Sherri, have a question or a comment? Okay, all right, just making sure.
All right, I'm not seeing anything, so I'll close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye. I'll move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. That brings us, you can either, I'm sorry, you can either wait till the end of the meeting, and at the end, when we take all the cases, then we'll deliberate. There'll be no further evidence taken at that time. You can either wait till the end of the meeting, or you can find out tomorrow from the zoning administrator whether it's approved.
I can call her office tomorrow.
You can call her office tomorrow. Well, maybe not.
Yeah.
Call her house. You can try.
We're expecting zero to 10 inches, so.
Vote on that thing. I go zero.
All right. All right, that brings us to number three. Is it C. Fuckery, 128 North Grand?
Seth.
Seth, sorry.
It's okay.
Mr. Fuckery, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
Sure, yeah, I purchased the home in October of this past year, and it turned out to have a couple of CO violations for the structure because it was a garage that was turned into a living space with an apartment above, but I'm just trying to tear it up and get it all legalized, so I went to the building inspector first, put together a plan as to what the plan is for the area, and they passed on the zoning commission. But it's a dwelling that's been existing. There's no changes to structure. There's no additions to structure. It's just basically turning the inside that's already been used as a living space into a legal living space.
Can you help me understand how you purchased it with these violations?
So I purchased the home in October. The violations were, they came up just before closing. It was an agreement with the seller at the time for the building inspector to come out and basically put a, I guess like an escrow clause you could say. So I currently have an escrow that's set up for, to resolve the violations.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
Are people living in both structures at this point in time?
There is, yep, absolutely. I'm living, I'm living in myself.
Are you in the front or the back property?
I'm in the back property. That's, that's the one that's in question right now.
No further questions at this time.
Tony G, Tony S?
Well, the only concern I have, well, the major concern I have is whether or not the building in the back meets the current building codes. Do you have any way of knowing that?
The building itself, so to my understanding, it does. It's just the, because the upstairs was, it's a legalizing, you could say, apartment area, it's the downstairs garage area that we're working on, and so the building codes that, that's kind of what brought us to this process. I was looking to get this area out to meet the legal codes, and so I went to the building inspector first. He came out at me, he gave obviously a brief thought of what he did, but, so I had plans to, you know, insulate the windows, doors, you know, all that, all that stuff, electric and all that as well. That was kind of the plan I passed on to the building inspector, which I believe led us to come over to his zoning area.
All right.
The structure itself is zoned properly and a grandfathered as far as the structure and the location.
Just something related to that, if I recall from looking at the, at the diagram of the second, you have a boiler room up on the second floor? That's how, is that how that's set up?
No, it's on the first floor.
Okay. All right, so what, what do you have then on the, on the second floor?
The second floor is the, like a living, the bedroom, the kitchenette, and you got it.
Okay, right, got it, yep. There's a, there's a diagram here, okay. All right, got it, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? There's no one in the room? Anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this?
Looks like no.
All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item four, 9 Orchard Park.
Hi, my name is Therese Nunez. I'm the architect working with Sabrina and Jerry Bader.
Ms. Nunez, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
So we're trying to put a garage and kitchen extension onto their house. The existing house is already over their setback line. We're hoping to extend that. Currently, the existing garage is about four foot two over the right setback line. We're hoping to extend it by another five foot two inches, looking for a variance of nine foot four and a half inches in total, leaving 10 to seven and a half inches to the property line. And this would be to put in a two-car garage and then extend the kitchen towards the back of the property.
Okay, and how high is it going to be?
It's about 31 feet tall.
Okay, and how, on the side lot line, how's it going to look?
Okay, I can, I know we didn't submit. I can share an elevation if that's helpful.
Sure.
Or do you want me to just describe it?
No, if you could share, that's fine.
Sure, let me just see how to do that here.
It should be at the bottom of your screen, and then you just have to make sure the file's open before you hit the share, and then.
All right, and maybe, yeah, I believe it's, well, it opens.
All right, now we're seeing your screen, yep.
Okay, great. So this would be our front elevation. We have over the first garage.
We're, we're not hearing you because I, you seem, something's hitting your microphone?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I think my finger was there just hitting the screen. Okay, so the first garage bay along closer to the street is accessed from the side, so from the front, where we have the two-story addition, you're going to be seeing this wall. And then the second bay is accessed straight on, and that one we're going to keep single height with just, both have hindbricks on them.
Okay. All right, Christine?
No questions. It looks straightforward.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony G?
No questions.
Tony S?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? And if you could stop sharing your screen for a moment?
Oh, sure, I see you.
Thanks. All right, there's, there's no one in the room? Anyone on Zoom?
And if you're muted, you just unmute yourself or raise your hand.
All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number five, 62 Alder Drive. Is there someone here, Missy?
Therese Nunez, on Zoom.
Ms. Nunez, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe what you want to do?
Okay, so this is my father's property. We are trying to sell it. I'm executor of the estate, and it turns out there are three structures that are too close to the property line, so we're looking for variance. All these structures were built in the 1970s. The first being the carport that extends from the garage, and there's a corner that actually crosses the line. So our intent is to modify that so that it, the structure is six inches away from the property line, so the, the carport is still usable. Behind that is a shed, and that is currently about six inches away from the property line. And then way in the back, there's like a lead-to woodshed, which we're going to cut down to an eight-by-eight, but it is still, you know, close to the property line in the back. There's nothing behind the property line there that's basically a swamp, so we're looking for variance on three structures.
And the carport, that's, that construction that's there, that's from the 70s?
Yes.
And if you reduce it, how are you going to reduce it so it's only six inches from the property?
We're, we're going to angle in the corner, so we're going to, there's several posts that support the structure along the borderline, and we're going to take out the front post, angle in the corner so it's within the line and support it with a post that's, that's further inside. That will still give enough clearance for a car to be able to go in and park.
How much clearance do you think you will have there? It looked kind of tight. Well, let me ask it this way, are you, can you fit a car in there now?
Yes. Well, my father used to park his truck in there, so the aim is to be able to, be able to fit a regular car in there, and, you know, we measured the car and decided that that was still going to work.
Is the garage functioning as a garage?
Yes, actually, the garage has an extension on it, which is a shed, and, and that was, that was actually done with a CO and a hood.
So let me ask you this, do you need the carport?
We have buyers for the house, and they would like to keep the carport if possible.
Okay, those are the questions I have. Christine?
No, no other questions.
Art?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Phyllis?
So I visited the property on Sunday, and they're at, sorry, and at the back of the property, there are two different, what look like surveyor markers. One is closer to the woodshed, the other one is farther away from the woodshed, and both of them are kind of in the swamp. Which one's the property line, please?
It's the, the stake to plunge the peg on it. The one that's further away that looks like a tall iron rod, I don't know who put that in.
Okay.
That was there forever. We just, we just had the property surveyed, so the surveyor put those stakes in. So there's one that is closer to the woodshed, that's the real, that's the real property line.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Tony G?
And you said that all the structures, including the shed, have been there since the 70s?
Yes.
The red shed? Okay, that's all I had.
Tony S?
And no questions for me.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application?
I've got the Riley's there.
Hi, you know, we're the next door neighbors at 62 Alder. We're just wondering what's the experience and we.
Excuse me, sir, sir, I just need to swear you in.
Just a moment.
I'm sorry, I just have to swear you in. Do you, do you both swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Yes, we're just wondering, you know, this carport, it comes around to the property line, and it's about 10 and 12 feet from our house, and we're just wondering if by agreeing to everything that, you know, that, does this mean that the next owner will be able to build right up to our property line? We're just, you know, kind of a, we're here.
How long have you had that property?
Since January of last year.
Okay, so if the variance was granted on each of the items, they would pretty much stay where they, where they are? The carport, the encroachment would be six inches away from your property line? So, but they wouldn't be entitled to bring anything any closer unless they came back for another variance?
Okay.
That's, that's correct? That's correct, Lisa?
Yes. Exactly, the carport currently is a little bit on your property line, so that's why they're proposing to move the front corner of it back onto their property with six inches of clearance, so, and that's where it would stay unless they came back to this or seeing something different.
Lisa, but hypothetically, if they were to, just, just to clarify for everybody, if they wanted to, if someone came in and wanted to tear down the carport and pull up, put up a, a new room or in addition to the garage, would they be entitled to build to the point of where the carport is now, or would they have to come back for a separate variance?
It would be an interesting question, probably because the carport is open now. We would make them come back for a variance if they wanted to, you know, enclose that and make it a room because it's sufficiently different from a room. I mean, it's one thing if you have a screen in Fort Chin, you enclose it, those are closer calls, but something like a carport, I think that would definitely require a return trip to the ZDA.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay, anyone else who wishes to comment on this application? Then I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number six, 13 East Dogwood. Is it? Okay, come on in, have a seat. If you mind taking off your hat? Thank you. Just state your name?
Mohinder Mangat.
Mr. Mangat, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you describe your application?
I bought this property last year in April, and the previous owner was living there illegally because I bought in full closure action. So finally, he moved in November, then I'm in the process of doing some renovations and realized there was an addition done on the property in 1958. That was, and he never got legalized, so I'm trying to legalize it. In order to do that, I need a variance of 17 feet from the side.
Are you increasing the boundaries of the property, of the building at all?
No.
Let me, let me ask you this, have you had the property surveyed?
I have, I just got the survey, and I have it.
All right, are you sure about the three feet because?
I, it, from the survey, it doesn't seem like. I just got it like half an hour ago. I did not even look at it, but it seems like.
Based upon our review of the property, it seems that you're much closer to the property line. Thank you. So this survey seems to show that it's right on the property line?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that you'll need to re-advertise? Lisa? Okay. Unfortunately, what you've requested and what's been advertised is, is a variance of this amount.
Seventeen.
And you need a variance of that amount, okay? So I think you need to re-advertise? Do we just want to adjourn this and?
Well, you should see if anyone is present tonight to speak on it, and then otherwise we can, it, it technically doesn't matter because we'll have to do a new public hearing notice, so we'll have a new public hearing, but you can either, you know, continue this one and it'll merge into the next one, or we'll have it as a new one in the next one.
All right, in that case, does anybody have any questions from the board?
You're not going to change anything that's there, right? It's going to be exactly the same?
Exactly.
I have a question, which side of the house is right on the property line?
Here's the. The side of the house is the left side.
The left side, okay, because it, okay.
Okay, anyone from the audience? All right, and anyone on Zoom that wanted to comment on this application? All right, then in the next few days, you need to deal with the zoning administrator again and, and see what you want, how we're going to proceed. In that case, I'll move to adjourn to the August, I'm, April, April 10?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay. That brings us to item number seven, 55 Boulevard Knowles. Did you, so you had, you have a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay. Is there someone here from, for 55 Boulevard Knowles? All right, then I'll second call that one. That brings us to number eight, 212 Wilbur Boulevard. Want you to state your name?
Good evening, Ron Rosen.
Mr. Rosen, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe this interesting application?
Thank you. Actually, two different pieces to this. One of them is a, essentially allowing us to widen the driveway, and I, we're going, planning, actually after getting the comments from the, from Mr. Welty here, I think we've decided to do it on the north side, and that would make the expansion of the driveway 19 feet instead of 21 feet, which is only about a, a smaller increase in the size that we would do. The other thing is a special use permit for my son to park his truck in, on that expansion.
Okay, and what is that vehicle?
It is a, essentially a work truck for Bettini. He's been employed there as of the last couple of months. He is an HVAC technician, and it does not make sense for him to have to go into their offices to pick up the truck because he does a lot of stuff, but where they basically take him from there to directly to the locations.
And what exactly is the vehicle?
It's a, let me see, it's basically a panel truck. I think I had a picture of it here, if I can find it for you. It's owned by the company. Actually, I don't have it handy after all.
Did you give it to me by, with the comments, maybe, by mistake?
Uh, my, that's.
Is it only one copy? Oh, okay, so I'll pass this along so everyone can, on the board can see it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, okay. I thought we all got it.
That probably is on the bottom of the pile that I didn't intend to give you.
Are those the plates on it?
What?
Are those the plates? Is that the vehicle?
Yes.
That's the actual vehicle?
It's owned by Bettini, not by my son.
Okay. All right. Lisa, some time ago, I don't recall if you were on the, with us then, an application came in about a commercial vehicle, and my review of the, of our definition of a commercial vehicle, that applicant, that vehicle did not meet the description of a commercial vehicle. And I think this might be a similar situation.
You mean it was not a commercial vehicle, or it was too large of a commercial vehicle?
It was, it was not a commercial, it was not big enough, it did not meet the criteria to be called a commercial vehicle, requiring a special use permit, was the determination of the board at that time. That was a slightly different vehicle than this.
So the definition of commercial vehicle is a vehicle of more than one-ton capacity used for the transportation of persons or goods primarily for gain, or a vehicle of any capacity carrying a permanently affixed sign exceeding one square foot in area or lettering of a commercial, of a commercial nature. So since this has lettering of a commercial nature and says it's a Bettini truck, I would take it as a commercial vehicle. It's ultimately a question for Chrissy as a zoning determination.
And we spoke about that before, like, yeah, I would consider it a commercial vehicle, but when you go to parking a commercial vehicle, that's where it, it just doesn't seem fair in a sense to, to have a special use permit for something like this, but that's just an opinion.
Okay, and typically he works during the day, and this would only go out at night if there was an emergency?
Right.
Okay, and so typically it wouldn't be there in the daytime?
Correct.
And as to the driveway on the right, there's already, you already have some crusher rod or item four or something on the right?
There, there was some that was put in there by, not by my son, but by the previous town, who is my other son. He did that without benefit of checking with the town or anything like that.
I'm shocked. I'm shocked. Tell me this, are you, are you able to extend that back into your, back along the side of your building?
We could, the problem, if you look at the sheet I passed around today, is that it's, it's, even though I've got from the house to the lot line 10 feet wide, the fence takes up about a foot, foot and a half of that, so that it would be narrow enough if he either backed in there or went in forward, it'd be tight enough that he could not get out of the vehicle.
Yeah. Okay.
And I noticed that, you know, so far as parking behind the front of the house, that's if, you know, basically if feasible is the way that the, that it was written up in the town code.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
So we noticed another van that was there. I think it was a dark red color to the side. That's, that must be a little bit narrower than, than this.
Yeah, and, and he plans to sell that because he had that before he started working for Bettini. So it won't be there.
Art? I'm sorry, were you done?
No, I think for now that's all I can...
Okay.
So you're going to go to the left of the driveway, the existing driveway, you're saying now? That's your plan?
The, the one that's marked as the alternate option.
Oh, the alternate, okay, right.
Which would keep it out of the front, out of the front yard, so it, it would still be on that side, but the, and it's right, would be right up against the fence pretty much.
And you're going to only start, that's only going to come out about halfway to the existing driveway and then come in at an angle, correct?
Correct.
I see that. The rest is still going to stay grass, or what? You're going to change that?
Yeah.
Okay. No questions? There were no questions? Thanks.
Phyllis?
Sunday when I was there, there was a car on the front lawn.
Yes.
Is this a remedy to avoid that kind of issue in?
That, that car has been there quite a while. It, in the paperwork I originally got from the zoning board, they gave me a few days to get that out of there. They gave me an extension. The extension ends this coming Saturday, and I tend to get it out of there on Thursday.
That one has, has had a problem with a non-functioning starter, and we're going to get it towed out of there.
You mentioned that the truck can't fit in the garage. Is there currently a vehicle in the garage?
No, there isn't. It's, there's a lot of material stored in that garage, mostly household items.
Okay. And your son has another vehicle, right? That he drives around town and goes to the store with?
Actually, his wife has, has another vehicle. It's, and that one, she's a nurse, so she needs to get out at different times as well.
Okay. And the plan would be for that car to use the existing driveway?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Tony?
I'm okay. No questions.
Tony asks.
Uh, no questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? Anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment? I think there was a letter, someone had made a comment about this application, that'll be made part of the record and considered by the board.
The other thing, I don't know, the board wanted to consider, what in discussing this matter with Mike, we wanted to make sure that that tree in the front is protected to the extent possible on the right side by near where the driveway will be extended?
Correct.
The board may want to address like how close to that tree or some measurement for, you know, how far over the wider driveway can go?
Yeah, the, you know, the issue is that the tree itself obviously is one thing, but there's usually the, the area beneath the drip line of the tree is generally where the root system would be, so you'd want to keep heavy equipment and obviously paving off of, off of there. Is that possible to do?
Yeah, actually, we're planning to just do that in item four stone.
Oh, okay.
So that it would be permeable.
It would be permeable, but, and, but you wouldn't have to run equipment over that, that area under the drip line, right?
Correct.
Right? Okay.
Yeah.
I think that helps, you know, just to, helps to keep that screening, because it's a nice looking tree.
By the way, I did speak with the neighbors on that side, and they are okay with this proposal.
You will receive the letter, right?
Do you want me to read it? As well as the applicant put in a, a comment also, a written response, and this is a March 6 letter concerned about 212 Wilbur Boulevard. From a concerned neighbor, I received notification of the application for a variance and a special use permit. Is it not possible for the commercial vehicle to be parked behind the house? If they are repaving, why not direct the driveway toward the side and back the house, where it will be less visible from the street? The current resident has vehicles that don't seem in use, and a wider driveway could turn into a parking lot, which not, which not, would not be nice for the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Hopefully someone on the board notices if they come by the property that there is currently a non-commercial van parked on the side of the house, and if this special use permit were granted, that the commercial vehicle could conform to the requirements for not parking out front. Hope the approval process would include addressing these issues, but I don't foresee wanting to speak. No one wants a neighbor who has met with them, and since the areas in their diagram are already being used for parking, I hope it is an improvement overall. Okay? And that'll be considered. Was there anyone else who wanted to comment on this? And I don't see anyone on Zoom. Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay? That brings us to number nine, the Assembly, Faith Assembly of God. Okay. Want you to state your names?
Good evening. My name is Christopher Lapina with Lovella Associates.
Good evening. My name is John Morbido. I'm representing Faith Assembly of God Church.
All right. Why don't you describe your application?
I just have to swear.
Oh.
Okay. Do you both swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I do.
All right. Why don't you describe your application?
Sure. Faith Assembly of God and Casper Kill One LLC are co-applicants in this venture. They're seeking a lot line change to provide additional land area of 2.7 acres from Faith Assembly to the Casper Kill One LLC property. Faith Assembly is current also before the planning board seeking site plan approval to modify and improve their parking lot at Faith Assembly property. This would allow them to relocate their parking closer to their sanctuary. To kind of give you an overview right now of the property. Here's where we're proposing to make some modifications to their existing parking. This current parking goes all the way out to the access drive that goes towards the golf club. We're proposing to relocate 169 spaces over here where the entryway is to the sanctuary. Currently, individuals are parking in this area and walking about 600 feet or so, furthest to the entryway to the school, which is located right here. Then they walk another 500 feet internally to get to the sanctuary. In some cases, those that aren't locked, they try to do a shuttle that's via a golf course, a golf cart. It's a bit inconvenient for the elderly members of the parish as well as the families with younger kids. Through this lot line change, Ginsburg will assist in the development of these parking spaces for the church. As a result of these modifications, we do need a few variances from the town. We currently have a maximum lot coverage, which is only allowed to be 5%. It's currently an existing non-conformity at 7.3%. Although we are decreasing the overall impervious area on the site associated with the relocated parking by point two acres, the slight increase of 7.9% is a result of the reallocation of the 2.7 acres from Faith Assembly to Ginsburg. Also, the allowable maximum impervious coverage on the site is 15%. The site's currently at 32.9%. Will have a slight increase to 1% of 1% on the Faith Assembly property to 33.9%. This difference of 1% is, in our opinion, not going to be a detriment along with the maximum lot coverage to the nearby properties. This lot line change is really solely for the parking layout and location to improve their traffic flow and will not pose any program changes to the property. They're simply relocating parking to be in closer proximity to the sanctuary. We were before the planning board, where they opened a public hearing in December of 2022. We continued with the public hearing in February. We were asked to address some concerns for the neighbors to the north of us as it related to potential screening. We have developed, and I'll show here, there is a existing property to the north of us. It's owned by the Tedesco family. It has not been built upon yet. We are proposing to put a eight-foot-high berm, 120 feet long, along our proposed parking, which is set back 55 feet from the property line, to provide further screening of their property in addition to a series of 12 to 14-foot-high spruce trees. As part of the last planning board meeting, we also agreed to land bank 15 spaces along the property going towards the east. Based on the input of the planning board, they determined that with all the mitigation we proposed, they offered a negative declaration associated with the impact of our project. We're here before this evening to seek these two variances, which are already existing non-conformities, to bring this property into conformance and move forward with site plan approval.
So it's just the changing of the lot lines. Will there be any additional paving?
No, we're actually, the paving will be where we are relocating the parking spaces. There's no increase in parking at all. We're actually, as a result of land banking 15 spaces, we're actually going to decrease the parking with that additional land bank spaces. There'll be a decrease of 0.27 acres of impervious between the start, between pre-development and post-development conditions.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
How much are you adding to the impervious?
We're decreasing the impervious.
Oh, you're decreasing it?
By 0.27 acres. If you look at, I'll show you on this set.
That's on the overall property?
On the overall property.
There are spaces that are much larger than what needs to be. Isles are a little bit wider than what they need to be as well. So building it in conformance with the town code, appropriate aisle width, we've been able to decrease some of the impervious areas on the site, and those areas that we're removing, the parking here, those will all be restored to lawn.
Okay. Thank you.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Tom?
Can you just educate me? What's land banking?
Land banking is a process where you have available parking for future use if needed, but in the interim, it's not a necessity. So you can land bank it by saving it as a grass area, but in the event that you need it in the future, you have to come back before the planning board to utilize that area that's being set aside. So just for the record, to, we're, we're still trying to work with the neighbors to address their concerns. Though 169 spaces was based upon what they get at one of their Sunday masses, what they're going to do is they're going to ask some 15 families to go to a different mass during the week, so that we can further reduce the concern about the parking in close proximity to the neighboring property. Although we do meet the required setback, which is 55 feet, but we're trying to be cooperative in work with the neighbors on the screening.
So, thank you. That's all.
Tony?
Okay. And I'm probably more confused than most people on this situation, but I took a ride out there last week, and you, you have a big sign on the side of the building that says Faith Christian Academy, I believe? And then there's a parking lot right before that. Where is that on this, on this map? I can't quite visualize this.
So right now, this is the, let me go to the existing conditions, so...
Okay.
To the school right here, the sign that you saw?
Yep.
Here is the current parking lot. That comes almost down to the, to the drive that comes around here.
Okay.
Here is the point of entry right here and the point of entry right here.
Mm-hmm.
This is the limits of the parking.
Okay.
So there's currently, I believe, 258 spaces, and we're going to relocate 169 of them.
All right. I think I have better, better understanding. Thanks.
And returning that, just, I don't think you actually mentioned it, Chris, but that area that is shaded there will be returned to grass condition?
Yes, I, I thought I said that earlier.
Maybe you did, but I, I don't know. I came across it.
But yes, this will all be restored, the pavement and subbase removed, and topsoil unseated as well. There is also, just for the board's knowledge, there was some concern about drainage in this particular area as well from Kingwood Park. We have shown everybody that none of the drainage from our property actually goes onto Kingwood Park. So there is no really impacts associated with the drainage from this project. I just want to clarify it because it was brought up a few times at different public hearings, but both the county and here agree, stormwater is not flowing uphill, so...
Okay. Any, any other questions?
If you back up, you had, you, you're putting a, a berm, you said, between, can you show on here where that berm's going to be versus, that's just to block you from Kingwood Park? Or just one lot?
So there was a, this particular area here, we actually got a plot plan from the neighbor as to where they're contemplating to locate their home. We're required to be 55 feet from the property line with our parking. Originally, we tried to limit the disturbance in this particular area and only replant area that we were disturbed, disturbing. We weren't removing any of the brush or dead trees on the property, we're just trying to limit our disturbance. This neighbor was concerned about the screening and headlights. We then since built a, or incorporated into our project, an eight-foot-high berm that'll extend from approximately about the third parking space in over 18 spaces for this particular screening, and then it'll continue to work its way down from eight down to four feet at the eastern end of our, our parking.
And that won't put any water on his property?
No, because what's in between the property lines, if you have a chance to go out there, that, there is a fence that's out there. That fence is actually on the Faith Assembly property. The property line is actually that stone wall that's slightly elevated, so there's a channel that runs along there that takes all the runoff from this property out to the driving range onto Casper Kill, and everything just pretty much ponds there and eventually infiltrates into the underlying flow.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right. There's no one in the room? Anyone on Zoom? And if you wouldn't mind unsharing your screen?
Sure.
If you're on Zoom, you need to unmute yourself, or raise your hand, or wave frantically if you have the video on. you have the video on.
All right, I don't see anyone. So I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number 10. 15, 5, 16, Budget Drive.
I am Dorsey Roy and I'm here to represent that application.
Dorsey, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right. Why don't you describe this application?
Okay, I'm here on behalf of National Science and Storage Base located, as you said, at 5-16 Budget Drive. We seek relief from Section 210-131F, which states that directional signs shall not be mounted higher than six feet in height. There are four total directional signs that are being proposed. One is a 2.86 square foot non-illuminated letter set that reads "Office." We propose that to be above the office door mounted to the canopy. The height from the ground to the bottom of that office sign is about 10' 7 1/4 inches to the top is approximately 11' 5 3 inches. The letters are going to be in matte white and gold material. That will be screwed into an aluminum bracket and tubing, which will be painted to match the wall behind the letters. The remaining three directional signs are all three-square-foot non-illuminated letter sets that read "loading." Each of these letter sets will be mounted to the canopy also, above each of the loading doors. Each loading sign is approximately 10' 10 inches from the ground to the bottom of the sign and approximately 11' 6 inches to the top of each. Similar to the office sign, the loading signs will be constructed of a matte white and gold material. They'll be screwed into an aluminum bracket and tubing, which will be painted to match the walls behind the letter sets. Being directional in nature, these signs are meant to clearly direct traffic to the proper areas for loading in the office. This is a very large building. It's over 4,000 square feet and it's three stories. Our proposed directional signs can encode for size coming in at about three square feet or smaller, but obviously each is proposed more than six foot in height and each one is going to be mounted to the canopy. The consistent, we feel that the consistent location of these small non-illuminated directional signs provide the most visibility for motorists and pedestrians. It's the same spot, no matter where you're looking. If we were to go lower, we'd have to find a different spot for each sign. We don't feel that the increase in overall height of the proposed directional signs creates any kind of undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. In fact, the signs are so small, they're about eight inches overall height, the lettering, that they'll barely be legible, if at all, from the surrounding buildings. And similarly, the proposed directional signs will not have an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. They're merely eight-inch gold non-illuminated letters meant to safely direct traffic. That's all I have.
Can you tell me from 9G, any difference in height where these would appear from 9G? You, the property's a little lower. Is that, is that correct?
From 9G?
From Violet Ave? Yeah.
I'm sorry, are you talking to me?
I, I am.
Okay, what was the question?
From the highway, where your building is going to be located.
Yep.
Is there a difference in height between the building and the, and the highway?
I, I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
That's something I can get the information for you if you need.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Christine?
Are there any pictures of these signs?
Yes, I provided, I provided several packets. I can share them if you like.
Let's see, maybe I just missed.
All the way at the end of the packet?
At the end of the packet.
Yeah.
Why don't you share it? If you can share your screen.
I'm not sure how to. I was going to come there tight, but I didn't because of the weather.
I just gave, I just gave Christine a copy of mine, so she is able to see it.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
And how tall, how tall is the, will the finished building be?
About 37' 8 inches.
Art?
No, I think when we were there, I live up that way. I think the building is below the grade, at least a story and a half.
That's my impression.
Probably, yeah. So you probably won't even see these signs by lab, I don't think. They're not, they're not backlit signs or anything, correct?
They're not, they're not illuminated, right? They're just a piece of acrylic.
You never even see them. Okay. Thank you.
Christine, did you have a question now that you could?
That was all. I just wanted to see what it looked like. Thank you.
Phyllis?
No, I have no questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
All right. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? There's no one in the room? Anyone on Zoom? All right, I don't, I don't see anyone, therefore I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us back to 55 Boulevard Knowles. Is there someone here from the application? Why don't you come on up? Okay. You state your name?
Evelyn Van Orstrand.
Ms. Van Orstrand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right. Why don't you describe what you want to do?
Well, the deck, I believe, is 10 by like 31, but we would just want to enclose 10 by 15 of it.
Okay. And so it's not going any closer to the rear or something?
No, no, it's not going out. It's just going up.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
I have no questions, but I want to thank you because your grandchildren directed me to where I needed to go.
Thank you.
And I was very confused and they were just wonderful.
Yeah, I was blessed with three of them.
You're welcome.
Need a little more room now.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right. Anyone from Zoom who wishes to comment? I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right.
All set. And you might have missed it in the beginning. You don't have to stay. You can stay if you want to, but otherwise you can call the zoning department tomorrow or if it snows a lot Wednesday and get the results.
Probably Wednesday. They just closed school.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, let's see. All right. Do you need a break or you just want to go into deliberations?
Go ahead.
Because it's going to get bad in a minute. All right. So I think item number three, 128 North Grand. Well, he's on Zoom, but, or you want to do, actually that one's going to be a little more complicated, so I thought I would get up to speed.
Sorry. I forgot to zoom out.
So this is just really legalizing some things that have, was done, were done in the past and just are no real change? Anyone have any concerns about this one?
This is what, number?
Three.
Did we, do we still have to do two? That's what I wanted to see. Or is that?
I don't, I don't see that they're here, so I'm going to do people that are still.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? All right. All right. So then let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change to choose in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. These, these are nonconforming use, but they, they're grandfathered in and they existed for quite some time. There's no real changes that are going to be made. It's just legalizing these pre-existing nonconforming uses. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance, there is no other way to achieve what the applicant wishes to do without a variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial mathematically, I suppose it could be considered that way, but since it's existed for so long and there's no real change, then I, I think it's de minimis. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or an impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Again, there's no evidence that it'll have any physical or environmental impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it quite clearly was based upon the applicant's testimony, but that's not a reason to deny the application. And I offer those findings. So Christine, do you mind making this motion?
So, just so we're clear, you have to do the variance, which you're working on now. The variance is to allow the, you're allowed to do an expansion of 25 feet of gross floor area, and this is to allow the existing conditions, which is 59% of floor area. And then there is a separate request, which is the permit to allow the expansion. So it's sort of a two-part application, just so we're clear.
Did that help you, Christine?
No. Okay.
I'm being told that the broadcast is frozen.
Oh, the cable broadcast?
Yeah.
Let me, let me go in the back and tell them that the Zoom is working, so carry on.
There's no video at all according to my wife's.
Okay.
Please stand by.
So for our purposes, I would treat the, the variance, which you just did the criteria for as the variance, and then I would just have a separate quick discussion and vote about the actual permit to allow the expansion of a nonconforming use. This is not your typical setback variance, you know, where the property's too close to the line. This is actually a, a use that has expanded decades ago, but, so it's technically the expansion of a nonconforming use.
So we're going to make two separate motions?
I would do it separately, just so the record is clear.
Okay. Should I go ahead or wait?
Wait until we correct the technical difficulties.
Okay, it's, it's fixed, so it should be unpaused.
Okay.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three for the expansion.
It's actually three, but. Wait, I thought you said two. I, she said three?
Yes.
Okay. Never mind.
Okay. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Now regarding the.
Existing conditions, is that what?
Expansion of the nonconforming use. Anybody have any concerns with that?
It's, it's, it's existed for quite some time. Been there forever.
What's that?
It's been there.
Yeah. All right.
So, and this is not a variance request, so you don't have to go through the same five standards. The board can take it to account anything that it feels is appropriate. And I think during the discussion on this topic, you pretty much explained why you don't have a concern with issuing this one-time expansion for this property.
Then do you want to make a motion for a one-time expansion as?
Got it. Okay.
As set forth in item number three?
Okay, let's see. So I, I move that the board approve this one-time expansion for, of nonconforming use. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. In, in item number three. And this decision is based on a review of the application and testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members.
I'll second that. I'll second that. Second.
Any further discussion? All those who favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any, against? The next carries. Okay. That brings, that brings us to, let's see. Well, let's see. All right. So how about number four? Sabrina, she's here. This is an addition to the house. So based upon the diagram for the addition of the house, even though it encroaches, the addition encroaches a little bit into the site, a little bit further into the sideline, really because of the, the way that roof is going to go, I think it has kind of a minimal effect. The neighbor's house is pretty far from that lot line. I don't think it's going to have much of an impact. So let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be reduced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. It appears to be consistent with other neighborhoods, other properties in the neighborhood, and I don't think it'll have any detrimental impact on the, for granting of the variance. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. Based upon the positioning of the house, it's really impossible to achieve this anything any other way than with an area variance. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, perhaps mathematically, but it's just, it's really, the total impact is kind of minimized by the location of the adjacent property. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that there'll be any environmental or physical impact. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny this application, and I offer those findings. Art, do you mind doing this motion?
We're doing number four, right?
Correct.
I'm, excuse me. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in this public hearing, in the, in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right. Any discussion about this? All right. All those who favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right. That brings us to item number five, 62 Alto Drive. What, what do you think about the carport?
Is there any way we could condition it that if they were to remove it, that they, they can't add something back onto that space or is that, is that not possible because?
If they, if they were to make a material change.
Yeah.
Then they have to come back for a variance.
Okay. No matter what it is? Like even if they were to re?
Well, a material change, so, okay? I, if we're going to approve this, then I would just condition it on those agreements that they're going to reduce the woodshed, the size of the woodshed. I think that's, I think that was the only.
And move the six inches.
Move the other one.
Right. Well, that's the, if we, if we grant them the six-inch variance, they're going to have to, they're going to have to do something to comply with that. So anybody else have any concerns about that one? Then let me offer these. Whether an undesirable change can be reduced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the variance. This has existed for quite some time. In fact, this is, is reducing the impact on the neighbor from the carport and the reduction in the shed will also reduce the impact on the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. In order to maintain the, the carport, she requires an area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it certainly is, but since this is a reduction in the impact, I think I would take that into account. And there are no, there's no evidence of any physical or environmental impact on the neighborhood or district. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, certainly was, but that's not a And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application, and I offer those findings. Phyllis, do you mind making a motion?
No, it's just the one motion, correct?
Right, but I would think just to add that condition about the reducing the size of the shed, the wood, the woodshed.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth in the chair, by the chair, and the approval of the variance is subject to the reduction in size of the woodshed. So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Number six was adjourned. Seven Boulevard knows they left. Two twelve Wilbur Boulevard. So it looks like the driveway is, I mean, the driveway has already been sort of extended on the, on the right side, the alternate part. But regarding the, the commercial vehicle, I think that there's a disconnect between the definition of a commercial vehicle and the rules regarding the parking of it. And because of that, I think it's somewhat unfair to, that the applicant requires a special use permit to do this. I think it ought to be allowed under, in these circumstances, under the, under the code, although it technically requires something. But my motion would be that, that a special use permit is not required for the parking of the, of this commercial vehicle. Anybody concerned about that?
Now, if I can just, I'm sorry, please have a second so you can have a discussion on the motion.
Tony, what do you think?
So we're, we're talking about what, Wilbur Boulevard right now?
Wilbur Boulevard, right, that Bottini van.
Right, right.
So it's a commercial vehicle only because it has lettering?
Right.
Okay.
And the reason for that, just from a policy standpoint, is they don't want people to be able to have, you know, signs in a residential neighborhood that, on a vehicle that they otherwise wouldn't be able to have in a residential neighborhood without the vehicle. So they don't want people to get, you know, a box truck or a van or whatever and put signs on it and use it for advertising where they're only allowed a four-foot-square sign in a residential neighborhood for advertising.
So, so this is not going to open, this is not going to open a floodgate of all these vehicles that are parked around town, right?
I think that, that there are already vehicles parked around town that have signs on them. But don't fit into the definition of a commercial vehicle, other than a sign. So I think that the code has to come, I think the code has to be changed to address that, if that's what the town.
But is this the right format way to do that, or is that something that the town board should do?
I think the town board should react to this decision.
So let me ask you this. If this was a food truck, and we've seen of these big canteen-type food trucks, that is a true commercial vehicle parked in the town, so that wouldn't, this wouldn't apply to something like that parked near driveway, correct?
I think it's, I think that's, I think that's a commercial vehicle under the rest of the definition of the code.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so that would, this.
And food trucks are otherwise regulated.
Not yet.
Or they will be.
Will be, right.
So the code section, though, that says that when commercial vehicles are allowed to park in residential zones, in order to park as a right, you have to meet things other than just not having signs. Not having signs is one of them. But the second is it has to be a maximum height from the ground to the highest point of the vehicle of six and a half feet or less, which we don't know, there's no testimony in the record as to whether this would meet that or not. And then a gross vehicle weight of 6,500 pounds or less, as indicated on the vehicle registration. So, and then obviously the vehicle can't be a nuisance or detrimental to health, safety, or welfare, which I don't think is an issue for this.
So, well, tell me, I mean, we could grant a special use permit for the guy.
My only fear is that this proliferates more than it has in the town already, because I'm starting to see these food trucks, et cetera, pop up all around me, and these vans similar to this, you know, there are just more and more of them. So I don't know which way we should go, but we do need to limit it somehow, I think.
If he parks it on the right side, you know, as far back as possible, I realize he said that it won't, it won't fit, he won't be able to get out if he parks it right next to the house, but if he backs it up as much as possible to the right?
But that's, I think, a separate question, though, isn't it? And I mean, what Paul's asking is that it shouldn't be defined as needing a special use permit. That's a different.
You're right, I'm not even seeing food trucks, I'm just seeing trucks from other vendors who have workers, HVAC people that they send out on emergency calls. Right, I don't, I hate to penalize somebody for working.
So, two ten ninety-two Q five says, "Commercial vehicles will be parked behind the front building line when feasible." It's not feasible for him to fit this behind.
I agree with that.
The front building line.
That's actually a separate question, though, because that says, "Commercial vehicles permitted to park either by right or by special use permit shall be parked behind the vehicle." So it's a separate question as to whether a special use permit is required. It's the zoning administrator's determination that one was, and that's the applicant, the application that you have before you now. And then it's a separate determination, I think it's within this board's purview to say it's not feasible to park this particular commercial vehicle behind the front line as a separate item.
In which case it wouldn't be a special use, is that?
It would still need a special use permit because it doesn't meet the criteria for being able to park as a right. We don't have evidence whether it's less than six and a half feet tall, or it definitely has signs, pictures, or illustrations attached to, on it. Actually, I don't know, because I guess they're technically attached to it.
Well, they're not limited to the two front doors of the vehicle. Right? Item D.
That's the whole panel, right?
It's the whole side. So, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't fit the definition of one that does not, that is as of right. Right? We don't have any evidence that it, that it does, and we do have a picture that says it doesn't.
Then you can almost guarantee that it's over six feet.
Yeah.
Because they're going to be standing up in the back of that van, so you're up eight or 10 inches. I'm okay with it, we pass both.
Okay.
Would we be safer, better off just to pass both?
The special use permit.
Yeah, just to cover everything. Lisa?
When you said both.
The special use and the, remember the other one?
The two ten, the Q five, whether it's feasible to park in the front yard.
Right, correct.
So, yeah, I think it, I would do those as, I think you can make a finding that it's not feasible to park and to require this van not to park in the front yard. That would probably be our mark. And then point two would be the granting of the special use permit or not, and if the board were so inclined. And then three, don't forget the widening of the driveway to allow, and which has been modified from 21 feet wide down to 19 feet wide and relocated.
But this, by doing it that way, would help us in the future, right? If someone else comes in, we've got pretty much all our bases covered, just to make it easier next time to either approve or deny similar.
Well, I think the more, the record, you know, each case as it comes in will be on its own merits, so, you know, I mean, for, for example, for the special use permit, the board can find that, you know, because of this tree that's located in the front yard, the fact that the widened driveway is not going all the way to the front of the property, and the van will be parked by a fence which screens it somewhat, that the effect of parking this particular commercial vehicle in a front yard is not a detriment to the neighbors, et cetera, so.
Thank you.
So, there is a staff report, let's see if it comes on. On the driveway. So why don't we do?
The variance for the driveway first?
Yeah. Phyllis, did you do one?
Yeah.
Oh, you, totally mind doing, for the driveway?
That's a special use?
No, the driveway expansion. It's just an area variance.
This is going to be for the 19 feet to do it on the right side, right?
Correct.
You'll put it up.
Can we make, is it a condition to keep the tree?
And you want to condition it that it stays out of the drip area of the tree?
Uh huh.
And you want it non, you want it non-impervious?
You want it to be pervious, not impervious.
Well, it's up to you. I mean, do you think it looks better paved, or would you rather have it gravelled?
It's gravelled.
It's kind of gravel now, right? Yeah.
Also, is it a condition, is it a condition about the other vehicles there? Because you said they're going to sell it, do we want to?
Well, those are still violations, so.
Yeah, those are going to have to be removed.
Okay, so let's take care of it.
You don't have to make them a condition, so.
So this is a special use?
No, you're just going to do the area variance with widening the driveway.
Okay.
By 19?
Did you give your findings?
You're going to rely on the staff report.
Okay. Okay. So I move that the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this area variance, the board adopts the findings of the staff report based on the condition that the tree maintains non-pervious.
I would just say, yeah, the conditions are, again, that they, that they stay out from under the drip line of the tree, that they use a non-pervious.
Surface.
Surface. Non-impervious. Or pervious.
Okay, pervious, right, pervious, pervious surface. Not impervious. I so move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
And I'm sorry, you reduced it to the.
Nineteen.
I did not.
Okay. So modified the applicant's application is just, is reduced to, I think it's a four-foot variance now, right? From.
Maximum feet is 15, so it'll be 19, yes, so it's a four-foot variance.
Right.
And it'll be located on the.
Right side of.
Right side of the existing driveway.
No, I think it, I think that's part, so. And was there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that portion carries. Regarding the special use permit, this is an unlisted action. So I move that the ZBA determine that there are no other involved agencies and declare itself to be the lead agency for this action. And, so I need a second for that.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
And I move that the ZBA determine that the action would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and issue a negative declaration. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Now regarding the special use permit. Regarding this special use permit, so I guess we're inclined to grant that with the caveat that it can be parked in the front because it's impractical to park behind the front of the house. I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in number eight. Decision is based upon the review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and their staff report. And it meets the criteria set forth in the town code with the provision that it's impractical to park the commercial vehicle behind the front of the house. Is that sufficient? Is there a second? All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Who was the second on that, please?
Somebody over there.
Hey, Christine.
Christine, thank you.
Somebody over there.
Let's see who's, all right, so no one's here from nine. So we'll do 10. That's five sixteen Budget Drive. There was a response from the county indicating it's a matter of local concern. I think based upon the location of it, and in fact, the height of the actual building, the really, the signs are kind of minimal, so I don't have any real problem with it. I think there was a staff report.
There was.
And so, Tony S., do you mind making this motion?
Do you need a name deck first?
It was actually, the planning board was the lead agency for that one.
Not the number 10. The planning board was the lead agency, the number nine, Beta Zemruka. This one actually, eight.
Yeah, we're doing 10, okay.
Wait, but it, there was a name deck on the.
Right, that was for the building. I don't know that the signs were shown on that. I don't think these were contemplated as part of the planning.
Okay.
In that case, I move that the ZBA determine that there are no other, well.
At this point, the planning board has concluded this action, so for this purpose, there's no other.
I move that the ZBA determine that there are no other involved agencies and declare itself to be, to be the lead agency for the action.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
And I move that the ZBA determine that the action would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and issue a negative declaration.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And then I'll sign that whenever.
Yeah, I'll have to write it.
And so now, Tony S.
Okay, so now, now we get down to the variance portion, right, for the, for the height of the signs?
Correct.
Okay, so I move that the board approve the request for an area, area variance set forth in item number 10. And decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and also, there's a staff report on this, right, if I move, yeah, a staff report.
Okay.
So.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Someone just go here from number nine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So number nine, Faith Assembly of God. Any concerns about that? Any concerns about that? Again, there was a, the county said it was a matter of local concern, and in fact, it seems, even though mathematically there seem to be some changes, there's actually a reduction in everything, it's just a lot line change. Okay? All right. So, do you mind, and there is a staff report on this one?
Yes. Okay, number nine. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number nine. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth in the staff report. So move.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, and then, finally, back to number seven, fifty-five Boulevard Knowles. Anybody have any concerns about this? Okay. Then let me ask, offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will reduce in the character of the neighborhood, or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, based upon the unique situation of these homes and that little piece of property, and this is, there's already a deck that was granted a variance, this is just a closing part of that. I think that there's, uh, there's no evidence there's any undesirable change in the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the area variance, this is the only way for them to achieve that, is through an area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, perhaps mathematically, but since there's no further encroachment into the side, into the rear side light lines, it, it's really de minimis. And there's no evidence that it'll have any adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood, and while this was self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I offer those findings.
Second.
All right, do you mind making a motion?
No, absolutely. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth in the chair, and I think we had, do we have any of that?
No, that was it.
That was it, that's it.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Uh, then that motion carries. All right. I think that's...
Did we do item number two?
Number two.
We did number two?
We did not do, we did not do number two, okay.
Oh, that's right.
A, Congress, so this was an in-ground pool, we were waiting really just for the homeowners association to grant approval, I think there's kind of a minimal impact, and there's not, there's no, I mean, it's a small, there's nothing much else to do. Anybody have any concerns about this one?
No.
Then let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will produce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The homeowners association has granted this, so I think by, by definition, that's not gonna change the character of the neighborhood. And whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method, other than the area variance, that's impossible to do without the area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically perhaps, but based upon the situation of the rear lot, of the rear yard, it's, it's kind of de minimis, and there's no evidence it'll have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, and while it's certainly self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I offer that.
Second.
All right. Phyllis, do you mind making this motion?
No. I move that, that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number two. This testimony is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair, so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. I move that the planning board be lead agency on twenty-two forty-five South Road, its proposal for a fifty-four hundred square foot car wash. Any objection to that?
Where is that?
Uh, where Humberto, Humberto's used to be, corner of South Gate.
Oh, I gotta turn it back into a...
To a different car wash.
Okay.
We'll see.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I also move that the planning board be lead agency, or I consent to the planning board be lead agency for twenty-two sixty-four, twenty-two seventy South Road, and one-ten Golf Club Lane.
Can I ask where that's gonna go?
That's just north of Friendly Ford, so between Friendly Ford and Halftime and Crew, there's two parcels there, yeah.
That big cement building over the back?
Yeah.
Okay. Second, if that's...
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I move that we consent to the planning board be lead agency on six-fifty-seven Chief Road, changes of use to a building, material, sales, and storage facility, inclusive of an outdoor storage yard and accessory storage structure, revised parking, and building additions.
Second.
Third.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And finally, I move that we consent to the planning board being lead agency for site plan and special use permit for eleven-twenty-six Dutch's Turnpike, that's a bar tavern to convert a hair salon into Junior's, like right across from Friendly's?
Yeah. Oh, the little...
It's a little...
Yep.
So, the...
That's the Junior's that got knocked down by the truck?
Correct.
Okay. Second then.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. I move to adjourn and declare, you know, a weather alert.
Second.
Okay. Thank you very much, and good night.
Drive safely, Lisa.
Bye, everyone. Bye, Lisa.